Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, May 28th, 2024, meeting of the Long Meadow School Committee. School committees and other public bodies may continue to hold remote meetings through March 31st, 2025, under legislation enacted on March 29th, 2023. The statute, Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, extends quorum reductions for remote meetings. All votes while there is remote participation must be made by roll call vote. This meeting is being recorded by LCTV and aired live. We will begin with the pledge of allegiance.
(Clerk) Pledge of Allegiance. (Clerk) To the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I love when we have so many students here and so many voices pitching in for that. That's great. Great start to the evening. All right, we are going to begin with correspondence. I'll turn it over to Zach.
Correspondence. The following will be recorded. A memo from Mr. Donald Jarvis, Director of Occupational Education at the Lower Pioneer Valley Career and Technical Education Center regarding the Walter E. Quigley Jr., Student of the Month Award for April 2024. Long Meadow Student Honored this month is Joseph Maolo, Integrated Occupational Prep. An email from Ms. Shelley Barron dated May 8th, 2024, advocating to include curriculum on the Holocaust in the middle schools. An email from Ms. Pamela Canjemi and Ms. Tracy Bradshaw inviting the school committee to the Witness Stones installation ceremony on Wednesday, May 29th, at 9:30 a.m. at the First Church of Long Meadow. Emails from the following people regarding research on cell phone free schools and requesting a ban in Long Meadow. Mr. Ted Steger, May 7th and 14th, Amanda and Justin Borzilak, May 15th, Judy Couture, May 16th, Wendy Ludwig, May 20th, Jonathan Bouvier, May 20th, Liz McFetty, May 20th, Sarah Montsy, May 20th, Kate Sobo, May 20th.
Thank you. Moving on to approval of minutes, we have a recommended motion.
I move that school committee approve the minutes to the May 7th, 2024, school committee meeting as presented.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Sign off. One more vote for votes. Zach?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
And yes for me as well. Thank you. All right, moving on to our public speak portion. If we have any guests who would like to speak, now is a great opportunity to do so. If you are online and would like to speak, you're welcome to turn your camera on or use the raise hand function, and we'll happily call on folks. I think we might have someone trying to do public speak here. One moment. Mr. Steger, is that you? Are you hoping to do public speak comment?
I am, yes.
All right.
I apologize, I got out of work a bit late, and so I'm in the parking lot, but I will speak from here if that's okay?
Absolutely, thank you. Go ahead.
All right. So I'm Ted Steger, I'm resident of Long Meadow 35 Warwick Street. I have two sons, both in center school in fifth and second grade. And, you know, my wife and I have been following all the research on cell phones use. We've, you know, been wary of their use with, you know, our youth, and just we, you know, we've evolved to, in a world without cell phones, and then our brains are being rewired, you know, as we can see. I think we're all a little bit addicted to our phones, and while they bring a lot of good, there's a lot of negative consequences, especially on developing mind. And Jonathan Height's recent book, I think attests to that. If you have not read it, I highly recommend it, but there's also a number of, you know, synopses up there online that are well worth viewing. But basically, from 2010, there's a number of outcomes that affect our children that are in the wrong direction, and it's pretty much really tied to the prevalence of cell phones. And what I would ask, and I'm glad to hear so many other people writing in, that we give our students a period of time at school where they do not have to be worried about likes, where they don't have to be worried about cyberbullying and other things, where they can look someone in the eye and have a conversation and not be distracted. I think it'll boost concentration in the schools and reduce some of the self-harm that is being seen in statistics, anxiety, other things. Other districts in our area have tried this, as a recent Washington Post article mentioned. So whether it's yonder vibes or whatnot, I just highly recommend we do this as soon as possible, and knowing that there's a lot of support in the community, obviously there's some things to work through, but I have no doubt that we can come up with a solution to get the cell phones out of schools and have our kids be able to focus on learning and social development.
All right, thank you very much for sharing your comment. We appreciate it. Any additional public comments? We'll just note that we are going to be discussing this a little bit later on in our agenda tonight, so those who are interested, this will be a returning conversation in a little bit. Seeing no other comments, we are moving on from public speak and into business with guests. We have lots of friends here visiting us from Glenbrook and Williams Middle School. I'll turn that over to you to introduce.
Thank you so much. Yes, we have a full house with us, visiting us from Glenbrook and Williams Middle School, and invite up the educators who have led the Witness Stones project that we've been deeply immersed in over the past year. So Pam Canjemi, Tracy Bradshaw, J.R. Golan, John Wills, their principals are in the chief seats here supporting the endeavor as they have all year, and then I think we can also make room, if we could, for the students that are joining you as well.
Sure.
If we can slide up some chairs.
Sure.
Excellent. Perfect.
It's like the Tonight Show.
Yes. We are grateful for the opportunity to present to the school committee and to the wider community, the, really the product of a year-long endeavor to recognize enslaved individuals from the town of Long Meadow. And our educators have been deeply immersed in professional development to understand the experience of enslaved citizens of Long Meadow, and to bring that learning to their students and give the students a chance to study it in ways where they were exploring primary sources very deeply and in very rich, productive ways. So I'll turn it over to our educators, either Pam or Tracy. You can introduce the team that's with you here, and I'll pull up your slide deck.
Sure, sure. So I'm Tracy Bradshaw. I'm here with John Wills from Glenbrook and Pam Canjemi from Williams and J.R. Golan from Williams Middle School as well.
And our students.
And our students. So Samaya and Carly are here joining us as well to speak.
From Williams.
From Williams Middle School, and?
Gianna Snow.
Gianna Snow from Glenbrook.
Fantastic.
So I'll start off, I just want to mention I'm also a community member as well, and I think that's part of the background of this project. So, that's okay, we prepared a little bit of a slideshow, and starting off the slideshow is some pictures from a field trip that we have done historically out of Williams Middle School to the Green. So year after year, for many years, we're thinking over 12 or 13 years now at least, we've taken the kids to the Green, and part of that has been to go into First Church and through our collaboration with Marika Burt, who is a member of First Church. She has always provided a background and history of Long Meadow. So you can see the kids on the Green, we've done colonial games on the Green, and we've learned about the history, and we've gone in the graveyard. So Marika's family is, I believe, 14 generations in Long Meadow. And so recently, over the last couple of years, with the help from the Long Meadow Historical Society, we have, the church has discovered that Stephen Williams, the first pastor and minister of First Church, had enslaved 16 individuals in Long Meadow, and through the Historical Society, we have discovered that there have been 24 enslaved individuals in Long Meadow. This is a part of history that we had never shared with our students before. We had always shared the names of Bliss and Colton and Eli and the names on the buildings and the homes around the Green, but we had no knowledge of this history of our town. So Marika had invited Pam and I to a meeting with Dennis Cullerton. So Dennis is from the Witness Stones Project. And Pam's going to speak a little bit more about the Witness Stones Project, but we got connected with Dennis and started to think about how we could incorporate the project here in Long Meadow to honor the history and humanity of those that were enslaved here. So Pam and I went about writing a mass humanities grant, and we were lucky enough to get that grant, and that grant provided professional development for our teachers, it provided all the materials that we would need, it provided monies to support the Long Meadow Historical Society in their research to help us bring all of this to our classroom, bring all the curriculum to the kids. And we have an amazing culminating ceremony tomorrow that we have invited you to. We hope that you can come. Our students are going to talk about the project, but I'm going to have Pam talk a little bit about Dennis Cullerton and the Witness Stones Project, so you understand where that's coming from.
Great, thank you, Tracy. So we were thrilled, that first meeting that we had with Dennis Cullerton. We left that meeting, and Tracy and I were saying, we've got to do this. He is such an inspiration, he's passionate about this project. He was a teacher who was working in Guilford, Connecticut. He was an eighth grade history teacher who came across a reference to an enslaved person working, or living in Guilford, and he, like us, had no idea that there were enslaved people living in Guilford, and as a social studies teacher, he felt the need to do the research. So he started researching, he kind of went down that rabbit hole that social studies teachers can sometimes do, and he thought this would be a great project for his middle schoolers. And so he was the first one to uncover the lives of two enslaved people from Guilford, Phyllis and Montrose, and we met a descendant of Phyllis and Montrose's. She came to speak to us. It's her sixth great-grandparent, yeah, her sixth great-grandfather, and just a fascinating story of how they were able to trace back this history. So he became very passionate about it, and it also, this is toward the end of his career as an educator, and he knew though that he wanted to continue doing this work. So in 2017, he founded the Witness Stones Project, and that Witness Stones Project for him was modeled after the Stoppelstein project in Germany, where stones are laid in the ground where Jews once lived and where they were last seen perhaps, and the idea is that you stumble across them and you discover the history of the Jewish people, where, again, restoring the history and restoring the humanity in the same way that these Witness Stones are now. So the idea is that we lay these Witness Stones to provide an opportunity for people to discover them and to ask about them and to learn the history here in Long Meadow of the enslaved people. Since he started the Witness Stones Project in 2017, he's partnered with more than 100 schools, churches, museums, and civic organizations across five states. He currently works as far as New Jersey and in Massachusetts. There are two civic organizations that have partnered with him, but we are very proud to say that we are the first school district in Massachusetts to partner with Dennis, and we're super proud of that.
So, excuse me, so after Pam and Tracy got involved and brought it back to us, we started talking about it at Williams and talking about it with department meetings at Glenbrook, and once we had the grant, we got in touch with Dennis. He provided over six hours of professional development work for the teachers to kind of get us started, and here's where we started, and he built it all up for us. And like Pam said, I can't reiterate enough the man's passion for this history and putting the history out there. And as a history teacher, we always teach, you know, slavery existed everywhere in the United States, but it's always kind of left hanging out there while it died off in the North. And there's never really any exploration beyond that, and this really allowed us the time to look deeper into it. And as an educator, I think one thing with history in particular, anytime for our students we can tie it into what happened here where they live, it becomes much more tangible and something more accessible to them. So that was kind of the basis for it. So as we began looking into enslavement, what it looked like here in New England, there were five lenses that we looked at. It's just a way of organizing how you look at topics, how you look at people, how you look at situations, that, these were people, but there was a dehumanization aspect, that their humanity was taken from them, and we began to explore what that may have looked like. So in the classroom, what we did is, we did a lot of kind of background work on what enslavement looked like in New England, which, again, no one really has any background on, the students at this point in their careers as learners. And so we built that up, so we had kind of a foundation, and then we began looking more directly at the primary documents relating specifically to Phyllis and Peter, two people who were enslaved here in Long Meadow. And there seems to be, of the people that we know were enslaved in Long Meadow, there's the most information about them, and this was the natural place to start. And so Melissa Sebolski, who works for the Historical Society, she's really the point person in town who began really combing over the artifacts and the diaries and the tax records and everything from Long Meadow in the mid to late, well, early, all the way up through the late 1700s, all, especially Stephen Williams, Reverend Stephen Williams kept a daily journal practically. So we have a tremendous amount of information from him. And so after we got the background and the foundation, and then we started looking at the primary documents, what the students were able to pull out of all that was, they began to write narrative biographies, they began to put timelines together on what we could understand for the life of both Phyllis and Peter. And the culminating activity of all this, oh, so there's dehumanization, the treatment of the enslaved, paternalism, the economics of it, you know, there's money behind everything. And then the idea, agency and resistance is, agency is, can you make choices for yourself, you know, for your own life? And through some of the actions of the enslaved people, we see that where they could make choices, they would. And the idea that they didn't want to be doing what they were doing, so they found ways to resist the situation they had in life. And so it really kind of opened up an awful lot for us, and I recognize, for the students, this was argued, without argument, probably the most challenging thing they've had to work on up through seventh grade, and the end products that they turned out, I have to say, all of us are so impressed and proud of the work that they did at the end. It's just really tremendous what they were able to put together, considering the amount of information that was available. And so the culmination, again, just to reiterate, tomorrow, kind of building off of Williams' original field trip to the Green and Glenbrook being part of it now with the Witness Stones, we're going to have this dedication of these two stones tomorrow, one for Phyllis and one for Peter, that they lived here in town, that they were people and they were here, and their lives mattered. And when we talk about, you know, Long Meadow growing as a community, they're part of the very foundations of it, and, you know, they've just been overlooked for too long. And so this is kind of where we're at.
The stones are already laid, so they are outside First Church right now, so we got these pictures of them. So you're, you know, you're welcome to walk by, but we really encourage you to come to the ceremony. The work is incredible, and we'd love to have the kids talk a little bit about how they felt about the work, so. Do you want to say anything about the project?
Yeah, learning about the entire thing was kind of difficult, because when I was growing up in elementary school, they mostly did teach us about it, all the slavery was in the South. So when we learned that there is slavery in our town, it just made me feel like, kind of lied to, and it was just really hard to take in and research about people who were really treated fairly when they were alive, and it's just really difficult to work with that.
Samaya?
I think it was like important to learn about this, because like we need to know the history of like Long Meadow, and like, we need to recognize like the people that have done enslaved work, and, yeah.
I liked learning about it because I thought it was nice to learn about, like, people that, like, people didn't know about, like, didn't know that there was a Peter and a Phyllis, because they weren't like, their last name wasn't Williams, and things weren't named after them, even though they like helped laid the bricks for Long Meadow.
Excellent.
Can you take us through some of the activities that we're seeing pictures of here on this slide or the next one, you can tell me to advance, or what are some of the projects that the kids were involved with?
So basically, we like write poems about the enslaved people, like Phyllis and Peter, and you write poems about like dehumanization and treatment of the slave, and you write like a narrative biography, like, about them and like how they're enslaved and how they're treated by other enslavers, and how their life was like difficult for them and what challenges they had to face.
And what are we seeing here, some of the other projects? Is there anything else you could tell us about some of the projects?
I wrote the timeline, and when you, it was like, kind of hard, because like, there was like only like five things about his life, because he was an enslaved person, and that's sad.
What were some of the events in his life?
Being baptized.
Or being forced to be baptized too.
Yeah.
Forced to be.
And his marriage to another enslaved person.
And anything else that, from the, from the creative projects that the kids were involved with that you'd like to mention?
Well, everyone took the project in like their own creative ways, like some people would like, I know two kids in my school, they made a haiku, and they also did a piece of art to go with it, so that's like one way to do it, and everyone else, like, they kind of got to choose what they wanted to do and express what happened in their own ways. Like, some people wrote poems, biographies, short stories, and some people made art pieces that represented what life could have felt like for them, and, yeah.
The projects are amazing. They have been put into Bailey Hall, which is the downstairs of First Church, and they're displayed, the work is just incredible. So even if you're unable to make it to the ceremony, that is going to be in Bailey Hall at First Church all day. We're actually talking about how and when we're going to dismantle it all, but if you can get over and see the work, it's really, it's incredible.
And there will be pieces of the work that will be in a rotating exhibit at Storrs Library throughout the summer. We'll also have some pieces at the Long Meadow Historical Society.
Yes, we're going to talk to Long Meadow Historical Society about a display in Storrs House. We're thinking about the Community House, we're working and thinking about different community places that we can display this work and throughout the summer rotate it through. I'm even talking with Reverend Doug at First Church about the idea of having another community viewing of the student work, not a ceremony, but a viewing of the work, because it really, you know, it shouldn't be missed by the community, so. Thank you for having us.
Yeah, I appreciated the opportunity to see some of the snippets of work here, so I'm really excited to hear that it's going to be available to look at in Bailey Hall. The poems that you guys wrote were incredible, so moving and evocative and just excellently written, so I'm really excited to see more of the work that you've done for sure. I'm very sad that I will not be able to make it tomorrow, I have a prior obligation in the morning that I can't change, but I am very excited to stop by later in the day and look everything over, so I'm glad to hear it'll be open throughout the day.
May I share too that the actual ceremony is being recorded, and it will be available on YouTube through the First Church's YouTube channel?
Wonderful, thank you.
If you get a chance, see you later.
Perfect. All right, other thoughts, comments from folks? All right, Samaya?
I have a comment. This is Mary.
Hi, Mary.
Hi, this is such an amazing way to connect classroom learning to the world around us, which I think are the most powerful kinds of projects, and so thank you for all your efforts. I'm really excited to hear this presentation tonight. Thanks.
Definitely. And I'll add in, as a high school history teacher, you guys are well-prepared for exactly what you're going to be doing. I love that you spent so much time with primary sources and doing all this research, that's fantastic work, and you're going to be on your way for the next round of education. But thank you, this is really important to our whole community, so we appreciate you taking the time to do this.
And I want to just thank Pam and Tracy and J.R. and John and other educators, there's been teams of educators that have been involved with this and have been involved in the professional development, to their administrators for supporting this work. It, you know, to have an opportunity to, you know, bring that passion and see it translated to the students and to connect to local history is so, so powerful, so we're really thankful for the chance to display, and the timing of this is perfect, given the ceremony tomorrow, so looking forward to it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming out tonight. Appreciate it. All right, thank you again to our guests, very excited to see the ceremony tomorrow and check out those displays in the coming weeks. Thank you very much. We are moving on to our next business with guests, which brings us to our high school handbook. We have a few changes recommended by our handbook committee, and Mr. Landers here tonight to talk to us about those.
So at the risk of offending Mr. Landers, this might be slightly less interesting than handbook language. Handbook language doesn't stack up to a great student presentation with their educators. So annually, we bring forward changes to either the LHS student handbook or the K8 student handbook, so tonight, for your consideration and potential approval, are some amendments to the LHS student handbook. This would require a school committee vote at the conclusion of Tom's explanations, so, and take it away.
Welcome, thanks for having me. Thanks for welcoming me, and happy late May to everyone. So our proposals this year, I know you have copies of them, but I would say that we probably are bringing forward requests for less policy changes or acceptance than ever, and the majority of this is kind of informational and kind of trying to, in a sense of transparency, sharing what we do, what it really looks like, and kind of tackling some of the issues and challenges that we are facing in schools. So first and foremost, I want to acknowledge the members of our school council. By statute, they have the responsibility to bring forward, debate, discuss, and eventually vote on whatever we bring to you. I want to acknowledge Andrew Mederos, who's also not just here, representing us, but he's on our school council. So I will go through briefly, I can answer any questions. The first proposal is really just a suggestion, it came out of the media center and our library, and it really represents more of what we do, it's more updated. Anything that is in yellow is a suggested new edition, and anything with a line through it is existing verbiage that we are proposing to be struck, and then the rest of the text is existing language that we would meld with that in yellow. So the media center stuff is pretty straightforward and self-explanatory. The updated, or the proposal for updated verbiage about teacher detentions, we- We looked at old language. It was anachronistic. It wasn't applicable. We tried to streamline it, make it more easy to read and more representative of what, what goes on. And then if you look at, on the same page, if you look at our proposal, a lot of places throughout the handbook mentioned that there had to be a parent conference. The proposal is to change parent conference to parent slash guardian conference, comma, phone call or virtual meeting because there's so many ways to communicate today. So that's really it in terms of our asks for language changes. The rest is kind of a request to, I guess, I guess the next one has some changes, but it's really additions. So Shelley Warren, who is the District Substance Use Coordinator, proposed this and brought this to the, um, to the ad hoc committee that meets. Anybody can be on it from LHS, any student, any employee. And then we bring those ideas, if there are ideas, we bring that to the School Council. School Council can agree with that, disagree with that, change that, et cetera. But this is just, Shelley is suggesting that we add some, the verbiage in yellow and it just is more up to date. It is more specific in the education that we do with students. If they have a substance use issue, she is specific on the particular programs that she uses to do the educational part of consequences. Moving to the next page, there is a lot of discussion these days in schools and in the world about academic honesty and AI in particular. We have, to be fair, we have entries throughout our handbook on academic honesty, academic dishonesty, plagiarism, cheating, et cetera. This was just a statement that the School Council, they came to us as a suggestion. We reworked it, reworded it two or three different ways. And this is the verbiage that the School Council was comfortable with. It mentioned something about artificial intelligence, but doesn't just stop there. And it is another statement about the importance of academic honesty and clarifying for students that while, what are some examples? And while artificial, artificial intelligence can be used in authorized ways, they shouldn't be, it shouldn't be used in unauthorized ways. There was a request from students to include the specific law regarding no discrimination against students based on gender identity, better known as the transgender law. We have, again, we have gender identity aspects in this book, throughout this book already. But students asked us for that and the School Council agreed. And we, and the agreement was just to include the, the MGL verbiage of the law. And then the last proposal is we are, as many schools are, as the state of Massachusetts is identifying chronic absenteeism as an important issue. We wanted to add to the existing language about the importance of attendance. And we wanted to explain to students and families what to expect when you're absent. So, um, you know, kind of talk about the onus being on the student to reach out, clarification about makeup work. Included some information about how mental health is improved and supported by being engaged in positive activities and, and being present in school and added some information there. So, I mean, those are the proposals tonight. I'm happy to answer any questions or clarify, but those are our suggested proposals if you agree.
All right, we'll open for any questions? And/or conversation? Clarifying? And/or possible motions if none of the above.
Nicole, can I ask a couple of questions?
Of course.
This is Julie. Hi. I have questions about the, um, the nicotine and tobacco policy and about the AI policy. So on the nicotine and tobacco, I want to confirm, is this the language or in reasonable suspicion? Is that like, that's like our standard language here or is that an addition? I guess I'm asking, is that a change or is that a standard that is always used?
Reasonable suspicion is a standard that has always been used.
Okay, so we're just adding more on it, on that standard here?
Right, Shelley Warren wanted to explain a little bit more to families, educate them, educate students.
I'd add.
Okay.
I'm sorry, just remembering that, um, we had added the vape detectors in the restrooms at the high school. And so we just wanted some language to, to catch up to that equipment.
Right, we had sent. No, I was, Julie, I was just going to say, we, we sent some emails out to families earlier this year. But that doesn't, because it was new. But she felt strongly and I, and I agree with, and the, uh, the council agreed with it, codifying it and kind of putting it in, in language in the handbook. So everyone has access to the information that we, that we kind of shared earlier in the year.
Okay, and so we would have always considered it to be, uh, reason, like a reason to search a student's locker or a person if they were just in the bathroom where there was evidence of someone else using tobacco or nicotine or other THC products?
So the, the standard is reasonable suspicion. Remember that a principal or a vice principal would have to defend why they did a search. So in and of itself, it could lead to that. But, but in and of itself, you'd have to be prepared to make an argument if you were ever challenged on that. But reasonable suspicion is the, is the legal, it's, it's always been the legal parameter that schools under case law have had to follow. If that answers what you're, what you were asking.
Yeah, I was, I was just curious, I guess, I was just curious about like adding those kinds of examples. If we don't, if we don't think that that's always the standard that we would view. I understand that reasonable suspicion is always the standard that we would use. But I'm just looking at the examples of like, you know, being in a bathroom where there's evidence of use. If, if we don't always think that that is reasonable suspicion, I was just curious why we'd include it as an example here?
Yeah, I mean, like I said, Shelley Warren thought that, brought this verbiage forward. We, we looked at this as a council. We did make some, some changes. We did not make any changes to, to what you see here. These were suggested. If, if you're uncomfortable with these examples, you don't have to accept them. But we, but the effort was trying to be transparent and, and, um, I mean, it's something that schools are dealing with. It's vaping and THC and things like that. So the thought was erring the side of being transparent.
Yeah, I totally get that. I think the goal is right. I would love it if we could look over the language just a little bit more. Because I, I don't, I, the, the thing that worries me a little bit is having language that's like over-inclusive. It includes things that we would not necessarily always say are reasonable suspicion. Because then it's hard to give parents or students notice of like, you know, like what are their rights or what are, are not their rights, if that makes sense? You know, like if you're, like, I, I think this is an example that is kind of like the most on my mind. It's like a, a student who is in a ba, like in a bathroom where there is evidence of use, right? That's the example that's given here. Like, does that necessarily always make it reasonable to search their locker or their personal effects? I think we'd want to be really clear with students about what they can expect in those circumstances. And so if what we have here isn't quite exactly what we think is always reasonable suspicion, I think we should, um, we should tweak it or at least just look at it a little bit more.
Yep, you're, you're welcome to, to look at it, accept it, tweak it, reject it outright. I think that what she was trying to ask us to consider as the School Council and what we agreed to, and, and we know that you have to, okay, anything that we, we bring forward to you, is just to kind of, you know, explain, every situation is different. But try to give those examples of what, um, you know, reasonable suspicion includes but is not limited to. And then she lists those examples. But if that's something, I mean, we, we don't have that in the book right now in this, in this form, obviously. We still have the right to search, but if it's, if the committee is uncomfortable with it, I, I, I respect it.
Yeah, I would, if, Nicole, I'd ask you, obviously, it's vulnerable on that either way. But like, to me, it would make sense, especially like, you know, because we're talking about students' constitutional rights and it just feels like important to be super, super clear. And I know, I know like what you are trying to do here, but.
So can I ask for clarification, Julie? Would language like reasonable suspicion may include but is not limited to be good? Or would your preference be to strike the part about the student being in the bathroom wholly?
I think, I think may include is fine.
Okay. Because then that gives that parameter that it doesn't necessarily mean that a search would happen. It just means that it's a possibility, perhaps, dependent upon other circumstances. Can I ask, while we're in that same section, that last sentence, "They will be required to complete the program with the Substance Use Response Coordinator", two thoughts. One, that I'm guessing that when we're saying they will be required, we mean folks who are found to have nicotine or THC products on them.
Correct, correct.
Which, assuming that's the case, that might be redundant because it's, it's stated in the next small section. Students found in possession may be required to participate, et cetera. Whereas this one reads more in its placement and without being clear that it's students who are found in possession of. It could read as, if there was reasonable suspicion, we would require you to complete a pro, a program. Which I don't think is the intent of what you're saying. Am I correct in that?
I would say that the, the intention of this is to say that, um, they would, a student would be required to complete a program if they were found to be culpable. Not, not, you have suspicion to search. And then if you searched and you found, you, you came to a conclusion. So if you want to, if there's, could be, if you need clarity there, we would not, we, you always can go to see Shelley Warren. She is accessible to anyone, but you're required only if you're found to be culpable of something. So if we, if that needs to be clear, we can make that clear.
So by culpable of something, we would mean you're either in possession of or currently under the influence of?
Correct, if you were held, if you were given a consequence for one of those specific things.
So I would say either clarifying that to say, "Students found in possession of" or "under the influence of", these things will be required to, or, I, I don't know that you need it at all. Because I do think that you say it immediately following that in the next paragraph. "Students found to be in possession of or under the influence of" may be required to. You could strike "may" if you, if that's going to be a requirement. Either scenario.
So I'm hearing two things, just to, just to clarify. Reasonable suspicion may include on the sentence that you, you mentioned before. And then to say, to clarify, "Students found in possession of or found to be the, under the influence of", "will be required", et cetera.
Yes. Because the last sentence of that first paragraph there and the first sentence of the next contradict each other a little bit.
Okay.
One is saying they will be required to complete a program and then in the next one it says they may be.
So you would strike.
I would strike the entirety of the last sentence. And then I would change in the first sentence, the word "may" to "will", if that's going to be the definitive consequence.
I can do that?
He'll probably be the cleanest. Jamie?
Yeah, just, I'm fine either way. It doesn't, uh, but whenever you write, say, "may include", doesn't assume that some, that it's arbitrary as to whether you follow up on the rest of these, they're not limited to? I, I, if any of those situations occur and whether it's my child or another child, we should be, it shouldn't be a "may". It should be a follow-up. You know, what are you going to do? Pick and choose which child you follow up with? I, I don't like "may", like, these are all circumstances where I expect us as a school to ask the question, you know? If somebody walks out and smells like THC, we should be asking the question. Because, you know, we should be helping them, you know, and kind of teaching them and educating them. So I don't like "may", but it doesn't, just because I think in "may" says that all the one, I would either get rid of this whole section or leave it as is, is my opinion. And I don't have an issue getting rid of the whole sec, that whole start from reasonable and get the whole thing out. You put "may" in there?
I think I'm going to let Julie speak to that a little more. Because I think her concern was particularly focused on the part that says a student being in the bathroom when there is evidence of use. Because as we all know, when a vape detector goes off, it's not necessarily one kid that was in there. So does that mean that we're searching all the kids who are?
It's not always evidence of reasonable suspicion. And so I'm worried, Jamie, about having something in there that's an example that actually contravenes the legal standard. Like, why would we do that, right? So like, but I find with your suggestion to just strike the whole section and not have examples and maybe find a, you know, to, to provide equal examples, but, you know. To me, it's, to me, it's kind of like the, the sentence if you were trying to give some context for parents to understand like what could constitute an example. But I think that if you put something in there that's over-inclusive, you're actually not giving parents the right to challenge something that wouldn't meet the legal standard but was done as a search, right?
Tom, I'll let you answer that and then I know Andrew had a thought too.
I didn't hear a question there.
My point is, I'm fine striking it.
I would strike, I would strike instead of that. And you, basically, you, you kind of know what to do, you know? If, if the vape detector is going off and there's two children in there, guess what? You know, they're, they're probably, you know, it's reasonable suspicion that somebody was vaping in there. Both of those children may get asked about it, so.
It's not just about, I'm sorry, it's, it's not just about getting asked, it's about whether you can search their person in their locker. And so it's like, it depends on the circumstances whether it actually gives you reasonable suspicion to conduct a search. But to your point about like asking questions, like that seems like, yeah. It's definitely where asking the question.
My opinion, I would scratch it and say, leave it up to the principals. If they have reasonable suspicion, they need to act upon it. They, it's on them to defend their position to do it. So, and don't put examples then. This would be my opinion.
Andrew, go for it.
Is there a chance that I could, like, look at, because I have worked on this and I just want to, I, I don't have a memorized.
There's another packet there if we just grab that from you and we'll pull out the page, Jamie.
Can I summarize what I think I'm hearing?
Yes.
So you would scratch the sentence that begins, "Reasonable suspicion includes", you scratch that. You also scratch the sentence that says, "They will be required to complete the program", right? And then the next sentence gets amended to, "Students found to be in possession or under the influence" "will be required to participate", "will". I think that's what I'm hearing?
I would be over that.
Yep.
And I think you don't lose anything by taking examples out. That, that type of thing can always be communicated via correspondence from the principal to families.
Well, and as you said before, there is an understanding among administrative staff already about what does and does not constitute reasonable suspicion.
Marty, just for clarification. So the first paragraph in yellow starts with "State law prohibits".
You're keeping that whole thing.
All the way up through what?
You're keeping it, you're keeping that through the word "found".
Okay.
And then you're scratching, if I'm hearing the committee, you're scratching the sentence that says reasonable, reasonable suspicion includes. And you're also scratching the last sentence, "They will be required to complete". And you're changing the first sentence in the next paragraph to, "Students found in possession of or under the influence of will be required to participate."
Thank you.
All right, other thoughts? Are we all in agreement on those changes? And/or other feedback?
I have one more question. When you are ready?
Yep.
Uh, no, I'm just going to keep on reading through just to make sure.
Go ahead, Julie.
Um, my question is about the artificial intelligence section. So I can just two seconds. One, how do we define artificial intelligence? And then how do we communicate to students what is authorized?
So, so every ninth and 10th grader goes through a, a class in their English and Social Studies class. They go into the library Media Center with Kerry Kennedy and we do, they do a formal lesson on that. Additionally, all English and Social Studies teachers, we ask all teachers to do it, but formally, Social Studies and English teachers do a session on plagiarism, academic honesty, proper citation, et cetera. We stopped this year, Julie, and we did a connect block on artificial intelligence and academic dishonesty. We'll do that again next year. It's important enough to stop and pause, so I will lead that. And then we'll give teachers some follow-up. So they get it, this is a consistent message. You really have to repeat these things for students quite a few times. We're asking, um, I think the superintendent is, is running a, a, uh, ad hoc committee about artificial intelligence next year. I know that that's going to have a rep- artificial intelligence next year. I know that that's gonna have representation from every school. I know that one of the things that we have done this year, and we're gonna continue to do next year is, is, you know, have teachers be very, very explicit in if they, with any nuances of an assignment. I mean, it's, it's, doesn't neatly fall into a package, but neither does the world, and neither does the, do the colleges and universities we're sending our students into. So I, I really just think that clarification of what can be used of, of, because I, I can tell you that last week I saw, you know, some teachers either talking to students about or telling me about what they reference to students when you can use artificial intelligence. So we, we don't want to put a ban on it. We just want to make sure that we are reiterating and clarifying how, how it can be used, when it can't be used, because they're not gonna get those kind of teaching lessons when they go to college and university. We want them to learn now.
Can I ask? Oh, sorry, Julie.
But my question is, is what is artificial intelligence? Like, what's our definition of what that is? So if you're, you know, presumably we're putting it into our rules and regulations. People have different understandings of what that is. So when we ta- tell kids use this or don't use this, are we talking to them about specific programs? Are we talking to them about machine learning? Like, what's our definition?
The teacher is al- almost always makes it clear what is authorized and what's unauthorized. For the most part, it's usually a teach, like in English, a teacher would be referring to ChatGPT as being unauthorized. But the reason why we have this as artificial intelligence may not be used in unauthorized way is because AI is in everything in technology, including like, for example, Grammarly, which is commonly used by students. And I don't believe that the English or History Department has any sort of issue with students using it. They use AI in their, in their software. So that's, I hope that kind of explains, that teacher makes very clear what you can't use. And if, um, like, if, if they're telling you what is, they'll tell you what is unauthorized, and then that's when it would become an issue with academic dishonesty. They make it clear throughout the year, and they make it clear, um, in the syllabus at the beginning of the year.
And it's something, Julie, that I, thank you, Andrew, and I, I think it's something that we just have to really continue to hit hard. I just think that's, I just think that that's part of what the, 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 the intention of this is to say, this is something that everyone is grappling with, this is not going away. We had a professional development, um, session run for educators by an educator at the high school in August. He, he, uh, did a great job. And John Weaver, English teacher, and he gave another, uh, presentation, an updated presentation a few months ago, and it's amazing at how much changed in six months. It was an entirely different presentation. So I guess this is just, you know, a, a commitment or a desire to, you know, continue to talk about this, put more information in the hands of students and, and families, and let them know that we talk about this, and we'll continue to try to guide and educate. Because the stakes are, are pretty darn high in college, much higher than in high school.
Nicole, any, any other questions? Is it, is it okay if I just follow up, or do you want?
Yeah, no, absolutely. Go for it.
So I just wanted to pick up on the point that Andrew made, because machine learning is built into a lot of different programs that we use, including ones where it's built in in a, a very subtle way. Um, and it's in, it's in programs that the kids are using even in the elementary and middle schools. The way this policy reads is that it is blanket unauthorized and considered to be plagiarism unless it is authorized. But what Andrew was describing was the opposite, I think, where teachers are telling students what is unauthorized to use, and like, leaving the rest of the world. Because otherwise you're like, any, any program that a child uses that they don't understand whether it has AI and machine learning at its basis is de facto plagiarism under the policy, I don't really understand that kind of approach.
If you, uh, if I could suggest, if that's okay, you, you could almost reverse it to say students may not use artificial intelligence that's deemed to be unauthorized by a teacher. I, I hear what you're saying.
That's fine.
Yeah, you, right, I hear what you're saying. You can't, you couldn't possibly make a, a clear list for students about all the things that are okay to use, but you can make a clear list to students of things that are not okay to use. So if you flip the language, it has the same effect, I think.
I'd be hesitant to make a list of things that are un- not appropriate to use, given how much is changing. Literally on a weekly basis. Including, I, you referenced Grammarly, and that was a question I was gonna ask you, is I, I feel like Grammarly just sort of seems to attach itself without any choice, um, to almost everything. And is that something that is on our students' laptops? Because while they might be acceptable use here, and while our instructors here might not have a problem with it, building a dependency on that, there have been instances already where at the college level, when students are allowing Grammarly to make adjustments to them, are being found guilty of plagiarism. Um, so getting our students used to programming that, that might be disallowed might prove complicated down the line. And so just kind of, specific programming might be trickier. I kind of, what you were saying about teachers being clear about what is and is not allowed. And I almost wonder if maybe one of the things to address in there is artificial intelligence is continuing to change. It is something that we are actively teaching on multiple occasions throughout the year, and teachers will be clear with students about what does and does not constitute authorized use. Those things might give a little bit more clarity that is also giving room to grow, because it is just gonna keep growing. Does that make sense? Sort of clarifying exactly what the current practices are.
Yeah, is there specific language that you'd like to, to suggest? I know that there was dialogue about not wanting to include specific programs and stuff, because things are evolving.
Yep.
Um, and, and we went back and forth. I think this was the, probably the most rewritten paragraph. And, and, but I mean, sure, I mean, if there's specific.
So could we open with something that says, artificial intelligence is a continually evolving?
Yeah.
Or do I want to say?
Yeah, I think.
Continually evolving?
We just, can we just say it's continually evolving?
Is continually evolving. Education surrounding the use of artificial intelligence will be taught at the classroom level and or school-wide, depending on what you're doing, at multiple points throughout the year. Teachers will provide clear expectation surrounding what artificial intelligence slash language models are authorized or unauthorized. And then, and then the rest of it is, is great. I like, I like that you put in not just copying another student's homework, but also completing work as a group without authorization.
Right, because it's, it's not just about AI. It's about academic honesty in general.
Correct.
The last sentence, the last sentence, can you just clarify?
Yeah, I'm hesitant to, I, I don't love how that part came out, so I'm kind of wondering if someone else wants to jump in on that.
Will be taught in multiple ways throughout the year, teachers?
Yeah, will, will be clear. I, I don't want to put the onus either on like, teachers now have to become low-key experts in exactly which programs they do and do not approve of at that moment, but, um, so, something that's a little bit more broad. Any ideas?
I don't, I, what I, what I could suggest is, in the, it's tough to write by committee, as we know. We could, we have some time on this, um, before it sort of needs to be baked and gone to print. So I think we could take the feedback. That could be available for additional conversations with committee members and bring this paragraph back to you at your next meeting.
That's perfect. We meet again next week, so.
And the general, so the general is to say, though, even though it might be tweaked, as of right now, AI is a, is continually involving education around, uh, AI, and I would say, and academic honesty.
Yeah.
Will be, uh, taught and addressed in multiple ways throughout the year. And then, artificial intelligence may not be used in an unauthorized way. So I can rewrite that, Marty, submit it to you, and take it from there.
Yeah, and it may be some additional opportunities for the committee to provide
Sure.
you or I feedback over the course of the next week, but Andrew?
I would just suggest, so are you, is it written right now as, did we, are we keeping the authorized and unauthorized? Or do, do you think, I don't know, I think unauthorized might make the most sense, because it's so hard for saying, if we're saying authorized, there's so, like, like every program out there, it has some sort of AI and machine learning use in it at this point, especially when it comes to language models and Google Docs. So I think unauthorized might be a little bit easier to just put in there, because that's much easier for teachers to stay and make clear about what they don't want, because the, that tends to be a much smaller list.
Yeah. Could we kind of go slightly old-school with the notion of artificial intelligence may not be used without teacher authorization? Or educator authorization? I'm just thinking like cell phones, the, the language that we used to have back about cell phones.
Right, right.
Use them without explicit authen- that kind of thing? Could that be a little bit more open to the number of ways that it would come up and be okay?
Yeah.
Julie set her hand up.
Yes, Julie.
Hi, um, I, um, I just had a, a, a moment about artificial intelligence, which is, can you, can you all hear me? Okay.
Yes.
Which is, we talked about, um, this last year in this time to examine academic integrity policy, or academic honesty policy as well. And just observing that what is coming to the school committee about artificial intelligence is just how we're gonna hold students accountable for it. And I would love to renew my request to have a presentation on how students are being taught about responsible use of artificial intelligence, because, you know, as you're saying, apparently it's, it's being taught to students along the way. But like, number one, you know, we don't know enough about it as school committee members to really, I feel for myself, to be able to help guide some of these conversations. But also, and I think parents would really like to know, I mean, as a parent, I would like to be able to reinforce at home what the schools consider to be responsible use of artificial intelligence. And I, I don't think I know enough about, um, what our, what our standards are. And, and I understand from what we're seeing that some of that is evolving, and I think that is okay, but we should, we should be, um, you know, we should be as lenient with kids as we are with ourselves about the fact that we're still sort of learning and trying to figure this out.
That's a good idea. I feel, I do feel like that would be a great parent's thing. For a community, I'd go with that.
There is, um, we actually, about a month ago, posted some information to the website that addresses some of what Julie mentioned, which is, uh, there's a parent page that we've tried to make prominent on where we hit digital citizenship and where we hit responsible use of technology and social media in the, in the K-12 curriculum. So there is some information that's, that's available. It maybe doesn't do the deep dive into AI that, that Julie's talking about, but certainly we're trying to educate kids and parents, uh, about, you know, what our expectations are. So.
Good. All right, I think what I'm hearing overall here is there are a couple of changes that might be headed back to the handbook committee, and then this will come back to us again next week.
It will not go back to the handbook committee. What I will do is I will draw this up for Marty, send it to you guys, and you guys have final say.
Okay.
So you can wordsmith it as you want. The committee, the, the school council is, uh, done for the year, but I will, I can try to capture what we said, send it to Marty in a Google Doc, and he can take it from there, and we will.
Okay.
We understand that the final word is here from, final verbiage is from this committee.
Okay. Any additional thoughts on this then? Other things that we've picked up on that we'd like to draw attention to now?
I'm just curious, back on the substance, the second paragraph.
Yep.
Students found to be in possession of and or under the influence of, was it intentional to leave out the, of substances as outlined above? Because it just kind of goes on and
Yeah.
doesn't speak about what they're in possession of or under the influence of. Do you know if they intended to leave out that phrase of substances as outlined above?
What sentence, Mr. Mazzurri, are you referring to?
Where it says, students found to be in possession of or under the influence of, maybe will be required to participate, but it doesn't specify what the possession items are, or under the influence of what in this proposed paragraph. So I don't know if you just want to add that phrase back in?
Yeah.
I assume it was just a oversight in terms of?
I think it was.
Yeah. All right, other things?
I would say, um, just to wrap up with this part of it, there are many, you know, most, all districts are struggling to pin down policy language relating to artificial intelligence. So the MASC, uh, I don't believe has put out any model language on this. That's the Mass Association of School Committees, where we typically get some guidance from. So that kind of, I think, tells us that this is a, this is a difficult area to pin down. But certainly, I think, as Andrew pointed out, so many conversations happening at the classroom level where teachers try to make clear their expectations to kids about what's allowable and what's not allowable, which is great.
Yeah, there is some language at, um, area colleges that might prove useful as well. All right, seeing nothing else on that, thank you very much for coming out tonight. Appreciate you taking the time to be here.
Thank you. All right, so I will submit that, those changes to you, Marty, and I will wait for further direction.
Yeah, and, and interim, if the committee has any direct feedback to me or you, we'll, we'll make ourselves available.
All right.
All right.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you so much.
See you at graduation soon.
See you at graduation.
You will.
Yes, good idea. Um, do you need to do anything to move up an item on the agenda? Or can we just move one up?
No, we can just move.
We can just move one up. All right, in the interest of letting Mr. Grant return to his formerly scheduled evening, we are going to jump up to item 11, um, on our youth track record board. We have, um, Mr. Grant has sent a proposal for the installation of a youth track record board as a donation to the district, um, and is available here this evening, so we'll, the chair will recognize you to give a brief overview of what it is you are requesting.
Sure. So, um, ju- just to be clear, uh, all we're requesting, and I, when I say we, I'm coming here as the coordinator of the Long Meadow Youth Track and Cross-Country Program, uh, for Long Meadow Parks and Rec, is the permission to affix this board to the concessions building, um, outside of the track. And the reason, um, that we're asking for this is the same reason that the Long Meadow High School track team has had a board up there for decades, and the two cross-country teams, the boys and girls, uh, for the high school have recently put up boards. And, uh, it's to honor the history of the, uh, great performances in the past. But more importantly, because records are made to be broken, to serve as an inspiration for people going forward. One of the more touching moments, uh, for me is when kids walk by on the way to practice and see the high school board, and they say, one day, I want to break the high school record in that event. And of course, these youth track records, you know, because they will be of their age, will be something that's a little more attainable. And kind of in the same vein as inspiration, one of the names on the high school board is, uh, P. Chapman for the 200-meter dash in 1984, that still is there. She actually, uh, I, I'm not sure whether she still works for the school district, but she did a few years ago. And I asked her to come to one of our practices, and she spoke to our youth. And she talked about the record and what it meant of being part of, uh, a track team. So that's part of why you have a record board. The, uh, sort of the more nuts and bolts of it, um, what we're talking about is something, the, the final wording of it, I, I think in your packet, you see the design of it. The, it's gonna be change up at the top, and so it's not gonna say Long Meadow High School. In Lancers, it's gonna say Long Meadow Youth Track. However, um, it's using the same company and the same format as the two high school cross-country boards. So I think it would fit well, um, as being near them. The board is, uh, four feet by four feet, or if you want to be more precise, I think it's forty-six and a half by forty-seven. The location of it, um, could be, um, below the high school board. And I, I sent some pictures in. So if you're familiar with that track area, as you're walking up to the track, you see the statue, and then the high school board, and you could put it underneath. It would have to be slightly lower, I mean, it's slightly smaller, because it's only forty-five inches, and it would extend all the way to the ground. The other possibility would be on the back wall, um, between the two bathroom doors. There's plenty of space. There's nine feet between the doors. And it would not be covering in that location or on, below the high school board, any of the bricks that are, have people's names. I, I'm assuming we don't want to cover that, because people paid money for that. So I think that's, I think that's kind of the, the basics of it. I mean, I guess one thing I'd like to address is a concern, if it's out there, that, you know, we could lead to a slippery slope, and there would be a proliferation of boards. And I guess I would say to that, um, you know, if in the, I think there's, I, I counted them up, there are like eight youth sports programs in town. And if we had a total of eight four-by-four boards scattered among the entire town, I, I don't think that would be the end of the world. I, in fact, I, I can't think of anything wrong with it at all. So there's that. And then I guess the other thing is the other sports, the, the numbers, the records don't have the same hold, um, that track does. So a, a child today can go up and try to break P Chapman's, I, I think it's Pamela Chapman's, record on equal terms. And the fact that other high school sports have not tried to duplicate that high school track board kind of indicates that, you know, if in the decades since that high school track board has not come up, that we've not had a proliferation of high school boards, we would not also have a proliferation of youth sports boards, many, if not most of which I would predict, even if that came to pass, would not, they wouldn't want to put it there. You know, the baseball folks would want it at a baseball field, and the softball folks would want it at a softball field. So, um, so I, I guess to my mind, this is something that's all good and no bad. And all we're asking for is the permission to put it there. Parks and Rec would be paying, uh, to put it up.
All right. Thank you for coming out tonight. Thoughts, questions?
Um, I'm a coach for the Long Meadow Track Program, and I coached the middle school distance kids. And I've seen how dedicated and committed they are and how talented they are. And I think that this is really important to sort of grow our program and keep it going in Long Meadow, and this is truly, it's a very competitive program. We have kids who go on to do really, really good things in high school and run some of the best times in the state, and I think that this would really help to motivate kids and just keep this talent going that we have.
Thank you. Andrew? Other thoughts? Jamie?
Yeah, I don't have any, uh, issue with it. I mean, this makes sense for swimming or for a cross-country, and actually, baseball has a bunch over at their little league stadiums. They just don't, they're not a part of our purview.
Are you asking us where to put this, though? Because there's a bunch of different spots, or is that something?
Well, yeah, the, um, I, I mean, uh, I'm flexible, you know? And I did have a conversation with, uh, Marty prior to the meeting, and he indicated that, uh, it might be the best approach to have some discretion in terms of below the high school board or on the back wall. And again, I'm okay with either location. You know, initially, I mean, there are sort of pluses and minuses. Underneath the high school board is a little more visible, you know, just because people walk by it more. On the other hand, it's kind of, it would go all the way to the ground, which would kind of make it less visible. And then on the back wall, there would be plenty of space. Yeah.
If it went all the way to the ground, would it be, I'm just thinking, snow and
Yeah, that, yeah, that, right. That's a good point. Yeah. Um, yeah, I, I think you're probably looking, we would be, there'd probably be a little bit more damage. So, you know, like I said, I don't want to make the perfect the enemy of the good, you know, so, um, I'm flexible as the location. You know, the more I've thought about it, I kind of think maybe the back wall is the best place. You know, but, and, and I guess part of, part of this would be the judgment of Marty and or other people at the high school.
Got it. So you, Marty, you would still determine where, I'm, I'm a big, the back wall, I think, makes the most sense, too. And it just puts the high school at a different level, right? You know, you get a, you record on the high school versus the middle, you know, the, it's a bigger deal, right? Somebody from nineteen eighty-four still has their name up there. It's pretty impressive. So I like the back wall, but I didn't know if you needed, I, I don't have an issue with it. I just was.
I think what motion we have doesn't, it says that it can be a location determined by the superintendent or his designee or the high school. So if that's a language that we're comfortable with, then if we have a specific motion that would recommend a space, we could vote on that, or we could vote to approve it and give Dr. Shay last call about where it goes.
I'm good with that to you.
Yeah, I, I, there's, there's location, the, the sort of more exact size of it, you know, how big actually will this be? The other thing we didn't talk about is installation, who's doing the work, who's going to do the install, and what, what might be the cost to do in the install. We, we did get a, a projected cost on the, um, you know, what the, what the value of the board would be, but I think we and assuming the committee is okay with us figuring some of those things out, then we're happy to run with the direction that you provide, but there's still a lot that I, I don't fully understand about it, the having a final rendering before we move forward and, you know, who's doing the installation and, and what the exact size. But those are things presumably that we could, we could figure out if the committee's comfortable with that.
Do you have information already about how it would be installed?
Yeah, so, I mean, I, I guess I have two points. One is Barry Jarvis had sent an email to Marty to, uh, uh, kick this process off, and before she had done that, she had conferred with DPW and with the town manager. So I guess, uh, I, I'm, I'm going with the assumption that DPW would be installing it. The, the other thing that I would say is that because the two high school cross-country boards were, um, that, these are, this would be virtually identical. It's the same company, the same size. And, and I guess in terms of the size, it's literally, it's either forty-eight by forty-eight or forty-six and a half by forty-seven, you know, so.
Is it, is it, is it the right thing to do to have it the same size as the high school board, or should it be a different size? Again, those are things that, you know, we can, we can figure out for sure, but.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, I guess in terms of the size, it would, I think it would need to be about the same to have the number of records on it. So anyway, I guess my point is that I was involved with the girls' cross-country board, which I, I don't even think came before you all. Um, and I, I could, because we funded it, the cross-country girls' booster club funded that board. And, um, how it got on there, I'm not sure, but, you know, we could figure that one out. And so, I mean, obviously, it wasn't a problem, because they're there now.
All right. If I may, I may state what I think could happen, and we'll see if everybody's on board with this. I don't know that there is, I think that for, for the most part, there seems to be, uh, an acknowledgement that this might be a nice idea. However, um, I would be hesitant to move or accept a motion that accepts the donation of something that we do not yet have the details on related to size, installation, maintenance, et cetera. That doesn't mean that once that information is available, that we couldn't move that along. Um, it just means that without that information, I'm not, I'm not sure now is the time to make a motion without the information that is kind of pertinent to it. So if we got that information, could we bring it back at a future meeting with more, excuse me, more detail about what the planned size, like, once you guys have had a chance to confirm, figure out the things like what the sizing is, where the location is, who will be responsible for installation, um, et cetera, then I think we might be in a position to really make this motion in, in a more thorough and, and responsible way, if that makes sense.
Could I just?
Yep.
So you're saying size, maintenance, location, and installation?
I'm not sure maintenance. Does maintenance factor into these? It's kind of, it seems like it falls under the general.
Well, somebody's got to maintain the records. I'm assuming that's just the cross-country.
So that's, again, this is very simple. I mean, with the cross-country boards, if there's a new record, you buy.
It's not going to change that much.
Yeah, exactly. I'm assuming maintenance is, is your group would take that. I would, I was more thinking the size, the location, and the installation.
Okay. So I mean, I guess with the size, I, I, I sent photographs of me literally putting a tape measure. I, I, I guess I'm a little, I'm, I'm a little bit at a loss as to what the mystery is. The, um, the, the quote that we have, they call it four feet by four feet. The literal measurement of the two high school boards are forty-seven by forty-six and a half. So I, I, I'm not sure what more information could be provided with respect to size. So, and I, and I guess with respect to location, you know, to the extent that the school committee wishes to fix that before making a vote, um, I would propose that back wall location. Again, there were photographs indicating that. Just with respect to the timing of this, the funds that are avail, that are available for this are, are just going to turn into a pumpkin at the end of the month.
The end of May or the end of June?
June.
End of June, okay.
So I would hate for this, you know, to, to founder on that. I, I, I hope, I hope there isn't any more questioning about the size. You know, because, like I said, um, I'm, I'm not sure what more information we can provide.
Yeah, I think just with the, my thoughts on size, it should be identical to the other thing up there and look just like it. It might not be a half inch off, but I would make it similar, consistent, so we look like we're one full team from kindergarten all the way up. So one's youth, one's adult, or not adult, high school.
Nicole?
Yes, Mary.
Um, in terms of installation, can we make a motion that has, um, the, uh, Long Meadow Track Program incur the cost of installation?
I don't know.
Because they have an annual budget, so I believe, right, Alex?
No, that's, yeah, that's the assumption. Uh, you know, the, the email that started this off from Barry to Marty was that this was being funded by Parks and Rec. There was never any requests from the school committee for any amount of money.
So the funding is there for installation?
Yes.
From your, from your program?
Yes.
And for the purchase price and the shipping?
Yes.
Yes. And so we're trying to figure out who would install, not necessarily with what funding.
But couldn't we approve it so they could buy it with the funding that's available? And if they can install it, they just have it. You know what I'm saying? Like, I, I guess they're basically, it sounds like they're asking us to approve this so they can meet the purchase.
Do we need to approve the purchase?
No.
Right?
Right, right.
Not, not to, not to approve the purchase, but if they do buy it, they want to be able to hang it up. We just want to say yes, and they have to work out the details. That's the question, right?
That, that's exactly it. Right. I mean, because we wouldn't purchase it if we couldn't put it up. That's, that's all.
Right.
And so I think the figuring out how, it sounds like the money piece is not the question.
Correct.
It's who will be installing it, not with what funds.
Correct. But, I mean, could, could, could you make a motion to approve the affixing of it with the manner of affixing to be determined later, it, in the discretion of town officials and the school superintendent? I mean, like, this seems like kind of.
So yes, but my concern just goes back, I don't want us to say we're going to accept a donation, that then we run into, as you pointed out, stumbling blocks that lead to us being unable to, and I don't predict that there are. I just, I would love to see, like, we already know that DPW is a yes, they will install it. We know that the funding is there. We know that we're going to put it in X location. I think the back wall totally makes sense as well. Then we know for sure that we're not accepting something without knowing for sure how we're installing it. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I guess, I guess, but I guess the worst case scenario would be that if for whatever reason there's a delay in installing it or something then, then we're just maintaining the status quo, right? I mean, like, like, nobody's the worst off. I mean, I, again, I don't expect there's going to, it's just that what we're trying to do is get an assurance that we can put it up before we buy it.
Yes, okay. So how would we word that?
So there is a draft motion?
There is.
But I would add to that.
Yeah.
That the school committee accept the donation of the youth track board to be installed and funded by the youth track organization on the LHS concession stand, uh, concession building in a location to be determined by the superintendent or his designee and the Long Meadow High School principal. But I would add in that.
And funded by the youth track, um, organization.
That's what I put. You're an organization, right?
Well, it's part, no, it's part, it's, it's actually part of Parks and Rec. So this is, so that's why Barry, the Parks and Rec director, was emailing.
And so do you have final say on, on use of funds to install? Or does Parks and Rec have final say? And they have given or not given final say that they will be financing installation?
I haven't gotten that far in the conversation. I mean, I, I don't know, I mean, presumably, I guess installation's probably at the end of the day not a big deal. I mean, DPW can do it, or, or the vendor. I don't know if the vendor that, that you purchase this from does install, perhaps they do it as well, but, I mean, I'm happy to work with, with Barry.
So we couldn't say are funded by the youth track organization, because technically it would be funded by Park and Rec.
Right, Parks and Rec, and, and that's.
Can we make a motion that says that Park and Rec will fund something if we don't have approval from Park and Rec saying that they will fund something?
Well, the, the email.
Can we?
Party.
Can we just say that the school will not fund it? Or do we have to?
Not to be funded by the school? That would, that would be more broad. I like, that could potentially work. So I think we have two choices. If we're going to do that, then that might be the cleanest way to do that, because I don't feel great about saying something will be funded by Parks and Rec if we don't have their permission to say that something will be funded by Parks and Rec.
Could you make the acceptance of the gift to include installation? Without regard to who's doing the installation or where the funding is coming from.
Mm-hmm.
That, Long Meadow School Committee accepts the gift, including installation of the designated plac or board as presented with the criteria of the size and location.
Including the installation of.
That way you don't have to worry about who they get to install it, whether it be DPW or the vendor, but it's all part of what we're accepting.
Okay, so we would then be accepting the donation of the youth track record board, including the installation of the board on the concession board building. That could work. Thoughts?
I'm good.
You're good. You're good. Other folks, other thoughts?
Could I ask?
Yes.
Could you approve the four-foot by four-foot size so that that's, I mean.
It's their donation.
It's not a bad idea, though, if we're worried about it being smaller or larger than what's already there.
Four feet by four feet is what it says?
Yes.
Of a four-by-four, uh, youth track record board. Okay. So, um, I feel like at this point, since I've been the one taking the notes, I'm going to just go ahead and make the motion myself, unless anybody else wants to drop on that. All right, then, um, I move that the school committee accept the donation of a four-foot by four-foot youth track record board, including the installation of the board on the concession board building in a location to be determined by the superintendent or his designee and the Long Meadow High School principal. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
It's just concession stand building.
Concession stand building.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Um, as. As amended to re-concession stand building. Um, I'm pretty sure that was Mary, was it?
Yes.
Uh, yes.
Thank you, Mary.
And.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second. Do we have any discussion related to?
I'm just impressed you got it all. We only missed what happened.
This is a nice little, like, this is like from years ago when we had to make motions on the fly, I like it. Any last thoughts?
I think this is great.
All right, thank you, Julie.
That's my only thought.
Seeing no further discussion, we'll move to a vote. Zach?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
And yes for me as well. Thank you, Mr. Graham, for being patient while we figured that out. Um, we appreciate you coming out tonight and look forward to seeing the finished board.
Thank you.
All right. All right, we were on eleven, we are headed back to, where were we, seven? Um, school committee announcements and recognitions. Chair report first to start out, just saying as the end of the year approaches, uh, there are a lot of wonderful milestones and events planned across the district. I could not possibly call them all out individually, so, um, instead I will say to all of our educators and family volunteers, um, thank you so much for the extra time and effort and work that goes into making all of these concerts, field days, field trips, showcases, prom, graduations, and more happen. They're incredibly meaningful to all of us. Um, to our students, thank you for putting your best foot forward. At all of these concerts, community events, and sporting, um, games, you help our whole community to shine. And finally, to our graduating seniors, we are immensely proud of you for everything you've done, and most importantly, for who you are. And as your next chapter begins, we hope that you build a life full of happiness and adventure, and we cannot wait to celebrate you this weekend. So, other school committee announcements or recognitions? Anyone else? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to other reports. Superintendent?
So the bookend, the bookend event to, uh, to the graduation of our seniors on Sunday, June 2nd was, uh, welcoming the class of twenty thirty-seven. Uh, so we, our kindergarten teachers, school psychologists, our nurses, our AL coordinator, a handful of others, screened one hundred and twenty-six incoming LPS kindergarteners last week, so, class of twenty thirty-seven. Yes, right, long way away. We, uh, some, some other nuts and bolts things, uh, personnel letters, uh, in accordance with contractual obligations, uh, we issued, uh, personnel letters to staff on May twenty-fourth. Uh, those would be letters associated with, uh, employees who might need transfer or subject to a reduction in force or licensure, uh, action. And so twenty-one of those letters were issued on Friday. As we wind down this year, we're already winding up next year, particularly in the area of curriculum and instruction, so we have a trainer from Amplify joining the district on June 5th to work with elementary educators who were not part of the elementary literacy pilot. We had, um, trainer from Advanced Math Recovery joined us on May twenty-third. We have educators that are working on revising potentially our homework guiding principles. That's a document that goes back to, at the middle and, uh, elementary level next year. The new individualized education plan template included in your packet of presentation that was provided to the Special Education Alliance of Long Meadow. You can take a look at that if you are interested. Also, thankful to Nicole Paris-Grohl for cultivating a number of partnerships to support, uh, student mental health and, uh, social emotional well-being, uh, particularly with the Department of Developmental Services, um, C H D, and Mass Rehab, so a number of outside agencies that we're working with to wrap services around, uh, children who are, who need them. And, uh, as Nicole mentioned, the, the number of end-of-year events is, is really staggering, far too many to list. For the committee and the community, I would mention one additional event, and that is the Senior Citizen Luncheon and Concert on Wednesday, June 5th. Thanks to Diane for working with our food service vendor, Music Department, and the Council on Aging to arrange that event. We always get a huge turnout Wednesday, June 5th, uh, if the committee's schedules allow, so, thank you.
Hundred and thirty-five.
What's that?
Hundred and thirty-five.
Hundred and thirty-five registrants, wow.
That's awesome.
All right, excellent.
Very good.
Yeah.
Thank you. Um, other administrative reports, Mr. Menz, I think you've got something for us.
Yeah, just briefly, we are working with, uh, Department of Elementary and Secondary Education on our renewal for our food service vendor. If you recall, we had a few glitches during the bidding process at the beginning of the school year, so, uh, this is our first renewal option with them, and the state has a very specific process, so I'm hopeful that it'll be resolved by next week to bring forward the amendment, but if not, it might have to be at our later meeting in June, so, and then there's additional things coming up on the agenda.
All right, awesome. All right, um, student rep report. Andrew, you're up.
Okay, so, just a couple reminders to start. Prom is on Thursday, May thirtieth. Graduation is Sunday, June 2nd. Um, and then the seniors had their last day on Thursday, the twenty-third, with the senior picnic that afternoon. Uh, things got a little rocky with the rain, but they were to move things inside, I believe, to the BTC in the gym. And then the LA test end of the year art show will be held at the school's front lobby on Thursday, June, oh, wait, no, Tuesday, June 4th, from six to eight. And then, um, just a quick update from the Key Club for, like, information on how they did this year. Um, so members, members totaled four thousand four hundred and eighty-three hours of community, of community service this year, uh, which is two, which is over two hundred more hours than last year. Um, and then members also participated in over fifty-five, um, service events, one of which includes, um, the Center School tutoring program, um, which allows, um, LHS students from Key Club to go tutor, uh, student, elementary students, um, on a weekly basis. And then to move into athletics, there's a lot going on. Um, the, congratulations to the boys and girls tennis teams on their Western Mass victories, and then a huge congratulations to Emma Kasperewski for winning the four hundred meters at the MIAA Division III Track Championships on Saturday.
Wonderful. Thank you. All right, um, other reports. LPVC, Zach?
No report.
No report. Energy and Sustainability, um, no report, and Seal, Michaela?
Um, our meetings are all done for the school year, uh, but just again, if you haven't seen the presentation on the new IP that's been sent out, um, it's really good to look at. If you have any questions, you can always reach out to Seal or email me too, I'd be glad to help.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Subcommittee reports. Finance sub, you guys have a good collection of things to go through tonight. We'll turn it over to you.
So the finance subcommittee met on May tenth. Included into your packet tonight are a number of budget reports related to the FY twenty-four fiscal year. Uh, the first is a year-to-date budget report, um, kind of showing our current activity and our line items, and a projection through June thirtieth. Um, kind of tracking where we have been all year with a, uh, projected, a small projected deficit at this point. The report was dated May 2nd, has us with a deficit of about a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. And again, there's still a number of variables that, uh, will play out over the course of the final two months in the fiscal year that aren't reflected here, but best guess and probably conservatively high in terms of my projection. But I think, as I've been saying all year, I'm not overly worried. I think we'll probably just come in, uh, write about where we're budgeted, um, based on, uh, some additional developments that have occurred. And one of those is related to a document in your packet, which is, um, from the Department of Elementary, Elementary and Secondary Education informing the district that we are being, uh, we're receiving an additional allocation from the state related to the circuit breaker relief funding. Um, the, the district is going to receive a total of three hundred and twenty-two thousand eight hundred and two dollars. Of that allocation, a hundred and seventy-four thousand sixty-five dollars will be used in FY twenty-four to offset, uh, special education costs that, uh, have been incurred this year. The program is, uh, the state provides funding to districts to help offset costs related to, um, uh, programs and placements of students that exceed a certain threshold, and they reimburse based on a percentage, uh, upwards of seventy-five percent of those costs. And each year you can apply, you can, um, submit a claim for additional relief, and there's certain criteria that qualify for this relief, and, uh, for this year, we happen to qualify for some additional funding. So it's good news, it will help us with that deficit that I just mentioned on the previous report. And so the one seventy-four, it will be part of a budget transfer that you'll, uh, that's on your agenda a little later. A hundred and forty-eight thousand seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars will be part of our FY twenty-five budget to help offset costs related to, uh, special education programming. Uh, so that's very good news. Um, this, the other report in your packet related to the FY twenty-four, um, budget is the revolving accounts, and again, this is dated May 2nd, and showing activity through that date of our special revenue accounts, uh, so school choice, the circuit breaker fund, uh, athletics, school lunch, all of those are tracking, uh, where we would expect. The one unknown variable, um, related to athletics is that we will have to wait till all of the spring charges, our invoices are processed to understand exactly how, um, that fund performed and whether or not, or what additional assistance might be needed, um, to support that through June thirtieth. I would say our revenue is definitely tracked much higher than we had in FY twenty-three. Some of that is due to the increase we've seen in the rates that the school committee approved last year, and some of it is increased, uh, participation. So, um, we're keeping an eye on that. And just lastly on that report, our food service program is, continues to operate, uh, very strongly. Participation continues to be very high and continues to grow slightly every month, which is a good sign. So we'll be using those funds to reinvest into the program in terms of equipment needs, uh, offerings to support, uh, this, uh, this lunch program we offer. And then the last item which would need, uh, consideration for approval would be two tr, two budget transfers for FY twenty-four. Um, the first is for a general fund budget transfer number two dated May ten. And this would be, um, steps taken towards moving money around to address some of the current shortfalls we have in line items, line items within our budget. Uh, some salary, some are, uh, expenditure line items. Um, there are approximately a page and a half or so of transfers that are being proposed and addressing, uh, pre-closeout transfers that would be needed. And the second set of transfers is related to our grants and special revenues. This would be our third revision to our grants and special revenues, also dated May tenth. Did just want to, um, just note that it does reflect the additional circuit breaker amount that was, um, that I mentioned earlier of a hundred and seventy-four thousand eighty-five dollars. So the total increase to the budget for FY twenty-four is a hundred and fifty-seven eight hundred and twenty-five dollars, um, that we would be adding to the FY twenty-five, twenty-four budget.
All right, wonderful, thank you. Um, those two budget transfers are two different motions, um, so if anyone would like to kick us off, we can start with the first one.
Yeah, I can do it. Uh, I move on the recommendation of the finance subcommittee that the school committee approve the budget transfer as indicated on the document titled FY twenty-four, General Fund Budget Transfer Number Two, dated May tenth, twenty twenty-four.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. Zach? Jamie?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
And yes for me as well. Next one is related to the budget revision.
Yep. I move on the recommendation of the finance subcommittee that the school committee approve the budget revision as outlined in the document titled FY twenty-four, Grants and Special Revenues Revision Number Three, dated May tenth, twenty twenty-four.
Thank you, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. Zach?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
And yes for me as well. Thank you. Anything else from finance sub?
Uh, there's one more item, but it's up on our new business a little later on the agenda.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you.
All right, moving on. No report from policy sub, no report from curriculum sub. Um, we'll move into evaluation sub. Uh, the evaluation subcommittee met on May fifteenth, twenty twenty-four to, um, aggregate the individual school committee members', um, evaluations of the superintendent, the super, or the school committee is required each year to evaluate the superintendent's, um, performance over the last year, um, particularly focused on professional practice and student learning goals, as well as the district improvement goal and four standards. Um, the first standard in instructional leadership, the second in management and operations, the third in family and community engagement, and the fourth in professional culture. Um, thank you to, um, Jamie and Michaela for, um, working on that committee as well. Um, we had, um, a good afternoons worth of discussion reviewing all of the evaluations. Thank you to each of the committee members for, um, submitting evaluations. We were able to pull together a, um, summative document that reflects the evaluations of the committee as a whole. Before we dive into an overview of those evaluations, we wanted to offer Dr. O'Shea the opportunity to give a brief overview of what his annual plan was and some reflections on that plan.
All right, well, thank you, and, and to echo, uh, what Nicole mentioned, I appreciate the time and commitment of the committee and the evaluation sub to, um, reviewing my performance relative to the annual plan. And as the committee knows, there are, and as Nicole mentioned, there are three components to a superintendent's annual plan, a professional practice goal, student learning goal, and then just more generally, the district improvement plan. Uh, the cycle that is represented on this slide is the cycle that all educators in Massachusetts follow, and so we're at about nine o'clock on that cycle where this is an opportunity for the committee to complete the summative evaluation, um, based on the individual evaluations that, that the committee submitted. And so what I, I thought I'd do is just sort of, um, cite for, summarize for the committee some of the, uh, items that were noted as progress in my annual plan, and then also I will identify some of the areas that the committee noted as, um, steps forward, so, or next steps. And so I think when, the intention would be that when I develop an annual plan next year, it would reflect the recommendations of this year's plan. So, uh, briefly, in the area of professional practice, one of the best things that I had an opportunity to be involved with this year was, uh, a series sponsored by the Mass Association of School Committees, or School Superintendents, rather, uh, and it was an opportunity for me to work with district, our district DEI leader on strengthening our capacity for a partnership in the name of equity was, um, an extensive year-long program. I was pleased to have the opportunity to participate in that with, with Nilda Arizaria, gave us a chance to really establish a productive working relationship as she was new to the central office team. One of the, one of the, uh, recommendations last year from the committee was to really focus on supporting early career and aspiring administrators. That was, this time last year is one of the things that the committee mentioned, and so, uh, we, we were very purposeful in doing that this year. I think it's more important now than ever to support early career and aspiring administrators. The work is difficult, the pipeline is narrower than it's ever been, and so, um, I appreciate the direction the committee provided in, in terms of the importance of that, uh, reorganizing the central office and introducing the, the Office of Student and Family Support. I think it was an important step forward for us this year. Uh, we have begun work towards the development of a, a new district improvement plan, embedding the vision of the graduate. Um, I, I think that's ongoing work, and, uh, I'll come back to that in one of the recommendations that was cited by the, uh, by the school committee. And then one of the things, obviously, that's occupied a considerable amount of. And then one of the things obviously that's occupied a considerable amount of our time was, is the establishing future of our middle school program and, and the submission of the preliminary design program just a few weeks ago. In the area of student learning, I think we've made some important steps forward. The committee has been very purposeful in, again, this time last year, requiring that we are, are more purposeful in developing an articulated curriculum review, renewal, and adoption process. We have moved forward with the Yale Ruler Program, the elementary literacy adoption. I am especially excited, excited next year for the adoption of Panoramas. This represents a data warehouse that will hopefully easily allow us to stack, to track student progress, track student academic progress and their progress social emotionally and, and along with many, many other indicators. That has been a goal of our district improvement plan and we're realizing it as we begin next year. Our professional development in recent years really has focused on multi-tiered systems of support with universal design being an important component of MTSS. It's been a strong focus of the professional development that we have provided all staff this year and previous years. In the summative evaluation that the evaluation subcommittee produced, there were a number of recommendations for next steps, all of which certainly makes sense to me and all of which will be incorporated into my annual plan next year. Specifically, you know, how do we gauge the success of the new elementary literacy program? There was, the committee had articulated the importance of ensuring that we're providing the time, the resources, and the staffing for these, these new adoptions so that as we get out of the gate, we're giving our educators the time they need to thoughtfully implement. Continued growth of student-centered and competency-based approaches to assessment. Parenthetically, I, I added, aligned with the VOG. This is an ongoing, this is ongoing for us. And as we highlight and showcase the VOG and as we line it up with the learner behaviors that we're expecting from students, we also want to think about how can we embed, embed it in assessment at the, really at the, almost at the course level, at the, at the end-of-unit level perhaps. A curriculum review blueprint that is reflected in the budget cycle. I think we're, we are very, very, very close to being able to make that a reality as you plan for the, as you begin to plan next year for the FY twenty-six budget. Again, the committee emphasized the importance of being intentional about building up a leadership pipeline and, and providing mentoring to early career educators and administrators, the importance of establishing data protocols, and then strengthening family and community access to information, whether it be our website or other platforms that we use to deliver information to families. We want it to be easily accessible. So a lot of the verbiage from this slide was pulled directly from the summative evaluation that the evaluation subcommittee put together. And once again, you know, grateful for the conversation I had with the evaluation subcommittee and how thorough they were in reviewing the individual submissions of individual committee members. So we're all a work in progress and, you know, there's, there's work here that will always be in front of us, but we'll continue to, to work towards many of these north stars. So thanks for the chance to, to go through that.
All right. Wonderful. So everybody has been given the opportunity to look over the summative evaluation. I'll just quickly run through. Excuse me. That overall, the committee found that Dr. O'Shea exceeded his professional practice goal and met both his student learning goal and the district improvement goal. He was also rated proficient in instructional leadership, exemplary in management and operations, proficient in family and community engagement, and in professional culture. And the entirety of these are made available for the public to look over after the meeting is ended. Any thoughts, feedback, or suggested edits from anyone on the committee? Can you do it, babe? I'm just looking back.
Oh, sure.
So I can see you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry.
One moment.
I didn't realize that was missing.
There we go.
Did you want to note the over?
Yes. Oh, I forgot that one. Thank you. Yes. And overall, the overall summative performance is rated proficient. All right. Any thoughts or feedback from anyone at home? And/or seeing none, we have a possible motion?
Yep. I move on the recommendation, sorry, of the evaluation subcommittee that the school committee approve the summative unified evaluation of the superintendent for twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four as presented and authorized the chair to sign.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. Zach?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
And yes for me as well. Thank you very much. Dr. O'Shea, always nice to get a chance to look back over the year and how very much happens over the course of it and to be commended for being here throughout the year.
And it's, and it's really a reflection of, you know, my work is a reflection of the work of our educators and our administrators and the whole staff. So, so it's, it's a pleasure to represent the progress we've made, we have made as a, as a district and as a, as a school staff. So thanks.
Well said. Thank you. All right. Moving on. We are into ongoing business, middle school project. Do you have a quick update that you wanted to share?
Nothing, you know, we're, we had submitted the preliminary design program. Our next step is to submit the preferred program submission, another acronym from the MSBA. And we'll be meeting with the MSBA hopefully soon, within the next week or so, to, to get some additional direction on that. So a bit of a lull period right now before we move to the next stage.
All right. Wonderful. I meant to send you the link to the next thing. So I'm just going to look it up so I can make sure that I'm sharing that. All right. So next up, new business, long-range planning. It has been my privilege to work on the Long Range Planning Committee over the last couple of years and that process has come to a close. And a big thank you to Cheryl Tiptoe for all of the work that she put into that committee and also to Corinne Munson. I might be missing her name. I'm sorry, Corinne, if I am, for all of the work that she put in as well. That plan is available and posted on the town website. If you go to the Planning and Community Development section, there is a subheading for Long Metal Long Range Planning and that full draft is available for public comment through June sixth, twenty-twenty-four. There is a very specific process to provide comments. There is a comment resolution matrix, Word document, or a comment resolution matrix available on the Google Drive if you would like to provide feedback on the long-range plan, which covers a breadth of information related to the town's planning and development over the next ten years. Comments need to be submitted through that comment resolution matrix. So encourage folks to review the plan, whether that is the entire very large and lengthy plan or just a particular chapter or section that is of particular interest to you. And then if you would like to submit a comment to Corinne Munz, then you are able to do that using the website information. There've been a couple of great community events related to long-range planning as well. So thanks to the folks who put the time and energy into planning those and also the people who came out to share their thoughts and feedback along the way. That is all on that. All right. Moving on, our next order of business is end-of-year transfer authority. And I'm guessing, Mr. Mazzu, you have something to add on that?
Yeah, every year about this time, we request authorization to give the superintendent the ability to approve end-of-year budget transfers. And that would be in accordance with policy DBJA. This, the policy kind of sets the thresholds when a transfer is required in that those parameters are when a line has a deficit of at least ten percent and is of, of more than a thousand dollars or if the deficit is more than ten thousand dollars. This just kind of helps expedite the process as we're trying to close out the fiscal year FY twenty-four's budget by moving funds around to address any shortfalls, to close out the books with unsure when school committee will have meetings. So it's an annual request that we have of school committee to grant this authority to the superintendent.
All right. Wonderful. We have a possible motion related to that authority and/or questions if folks have them.
I move that as specified in the school committee policy DBJA, that the school committee grant authority to the superintendent to approve the necessary budget transfers between munis, budgetary lines in order to close the FY twenty-twenty-four accounts.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. Zach?
Yes.
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
And yes for me as well. Thank you very much. I'm going to return to long-range planning just long enough to say that it is Corinne Mice Munz, and I'm very sorry that I said the wrong name earlier, who is our director of community planning. So thank you to Corinne also. We are headed into a discussion related to cell phones. For anyone who was here at the beginning of the meeting, we saw that we had a lot of community feedback related to research on cellphone-free schools and we wanted to open up an opportunity to discuss some of that feedback and maybe an opportunity to provide some direction to the administration related to possible plans for that moving forward. So...
I'll mention as, as you're thinking about this and to hopefully create an informed discussion, we've included policies or handbook language or even language from a middle school sort of school-based guide relating to cell phones or other personal electronic devices. So this is a compilation of the current language. And certainly as our, as our commentator mentioned that we kicked off the meeting, there's been a lot of attention on this. Folks from both sides of the issues, on all sides of the issues, talking to us about, you know, how we can promote the responsible use of technology here in school. So happy to gather any information that the committee might find to be helpful or, or take any other directions that you might have on this important topic.
So thoughts to kick us off? Anything anyone would like to jump in with?
I can kick us off.
Julia, oh, sorry, Jamie.
Can I go first?
Yes.
You sure? Actually, she can go first. Go ahead, Julie.
I'm sure. Okay.
No, no, listen, go ahead.
So just these three different agenda items, eleven. So do we have three different policy documents for the three different schools? Am I reading this right or not?
You had, so, yes and no. So you have one, one of the documents is from the LHS student handbook.
Yep.
The other is an acceptable use agreement that several years ago was actually part of your policy manual. But to make it more nimble and because we felt that it was more operational than policy, it was removed from the policy manual. That was back in twenty-seventeen. We've amended it a couple of times since. So this acceptable use agreement sits in both the LHS student handbook and the K-8 handbook. And then the last two documents are from our middle schools. And I believe these are, you help me out there, and these might be from our family, our school-based family guides.
Yes.
And there's some language relating to electronic devices in there. So, yeah. The, the high school, I'd say, just generally takes the position that students can only, and Andrew, you can help me out with this, but students can only use cell phones with the, with the approval of a classroom teacher. And it needs to be directed towards some educational pursuit.
Yes. Also, for the most, so how, the rules vary by teacher. Some teachers will just let you have it out, no matter, basically, all you need to know. For the most part, teachers have what they call phone hotels, which is essentially like pockets that usually tend to be, it's like, picture like a shoe holder. Yes, and you put your phone in it during class and you get assigned a number. Put your phone in. And when teachers enforce it, they tend to work perfectly. Like they're in the, they're obviously, they're in the holder on the other side of the room for the entire class. And then if a student is found, they didn't put it in the phone holder, a teacher will usually remind the student. And then if a, if a student tends to not be obeying what the teachers, what the, the rules that the teacher has set out, the teacher can always take the phone away for class or send it to the office till the end of the day. So in terms of sort of like how we're looking at like any sort of ban in school or whatever, I think teachers seem to have, obviously this is coming from a student, not a teacher, but the resources to manage phone use in the classroom. And I think there are a lot of benefits that need to be considered in terms of student phone use in school. Student schedules are very complex now. Things get canceled throughout the day and students need to find a way to communicate with parents during the school day or with friends in terms of maybe getting a ride home during the school day. If practice gets canceled or they now have to attend the club and they can't take the bus home anymore, how are they going to get home? So I think these are all things we need to be considering when we're looking at phone use in school. Because I do think, from my perspective, teachers are, do have the tools to manage phone use in their classrooms.
All right. Thank you.
So on these different policies though, is that the, is the middle schools and the elementary schools?
Middle, middle and elementary are the same, off and away at the middle and elementary level. With, quite honestly, the, what's, what's popped up for us is, is the Apple Watches, which I think our practice at our middle and elementary schools is they just need to be off. So we don't tell students that those have to be away, but phones have to be off and away at the middle and elementary level. And they're, they're really off and away at the high school level unless there's direct permission provided by the teacher.
Got it. So I guess my initial thought would be to really get feedback from everybody in town. Both children's survey, I'm talking all the way down to kindergarten because there's kindergartners with phones now. All the way up to high school, surveys, whether they need phones at school or not, and then also the parents. So I get that scenario, but that scenario didn't exist twenty years ago and everybody was fine. So I think it takes away from, you know, the teaching. So I think there's too much babysitting happening. I get it. There may be some classrooms that are fine and some are fine. You're just adding jobs to the teachers and you're taking away from time, you know, whether it's one time a week, two times a week. If you set it up so that just phones aren't acceptable in the school, it may give more time for the teachers to educate our children. So that would be one initial thought. But that's me, you know, giving my opinion on it. And I also just think it takes away from any interaction, you know. So, you know, I, I haven't been to a high school cafeteria yet, but I can imagine it looks just like when I go out to eat and I see a family sitting there where all five of them are only looking at their phones and not having a conversation. So you take that away, the distraction, and I think it might be a positive thing. So I personally would like to hear about the studies of, I think it's Chickaby who does it. You know, you know, what, you know, whether we can get somebody here that works with Chickaby, somebody in town who does, to get feedback really from there, but then also from all the different interested parties in town, including, including the kids. I, I think they deserve a right to, you know, voices to be heard. But I also think that they don't know the previous version of this before twenty-ten when they weren't available. So, and I think this may be a, you know, thing we look at school by school. You know, a kindergarten with a thousand-dollar phone at school, I, I don't know whether that, what positive does that bring to the kid's education? Or any elementary school kid or middle school kid? kid. Don't really see why they need phones. High school, you know, maybe that's something that we should be thinking about different because they are grown adults and they should be starting to be able to learn when to use it, when not to. But that would be my like initial thought process. But I think there's so many studies out there, both probably pro and con, that I'd love to just get feedback on, hey, where do we think we should go? And the people that are already making these changes, what are they experiencing and what, you know, you know, positives and negatives came from it? That'd be my initial.
Julie?
Yeah, I, I think, first of all, I really appreciate the parents to have written in about this. I think it's so cool to see parents reaching out about issues like this. And I think, you know, one of the things that was interesting to me was to see how many parents feel that, feel strongly that we ought to consider banning cell phones. I think it, to me, it was cool because, you know, in talking to other parents in town, I think people sometimes think they're the only one who wants limits and that that would be a minority opinion. But I think more and more we're hearing that, you know, this was something that, that parents want. I think to, you know, to Jamie's point, maybe, you know, opening us up a little bit more, especially by talking about it in these meetings, giving people who might feel differently or have like a more, you know, like a nuanced opinion about what we allow in which schools is very helpful to get a broader sense of public opinion. But I think, you know, I mean, the research on this does show that you can get, obviously like it's all different depending on the context of the schools where the studies are taking place, but you can get academic gains out of it, kids can get mental health gains out of not having cell phones in school. And I think also to Jamie's point, having, you know, taken the burden off teachers of having to place this, I think, you know, I mean, I don't know already if you would agree, but I think my experience as a parent is that often a way it's not working as a policy, right? It's not, it's incredibly hard to enforce. And, and to be honest, I think it's a, it's a tough burden to put on kids where like phones are specifically designed to gain your attention and to keep it, right? To ask a kid who's new to having a cellphone, you know, to, to monitor that for themselves and modulate it themselves is, is really difficult. So I, I'm looking forward to us talking about this tomorrow. I would definitely be in favor of placing limits on cell phones. I, I hear what Andrew's saying about the high school. I think it's like, you know, to me, I, I think we should consider banning all the way through the high school, but I do like the idea of kind of getting some feedback from students and teachers about what practices might have changed in the past two years where cell phones have been more prevalent so that we understand, you know, what we might need to put in place. I think, I think what we've heard from some of the school personnel, especially the lower grades, is that the, some of the interruptions that kids are getting during school are from parents. And so kind of thinking about like, what do we need to do to make sure that parents are using the right channels to contact the school where they need to reach their kid during the day or things like that, to just kind of, if, you know, if we do something like this to kind of bring us back to basics and, you know, what, what we did to contact our kids before cell phone use. But to me, it's, it's a, would be a really positive step for kids. I think even just the like, you know, the, the mental break of knowing that you're not going to be doing anything on your phone and the people around you aren't going to be doing anything on their phones for a period of time is really helpful for opening up an opportunity to learn.
Thank you, Julie. Other thoughts?
Yeah, one other thought.
Can I, can I say something?
Yep, sure, Michaela, go ahead.
I just agree very much with Julie and Jamie that it's been really great to get the emails. And I feel like I've been engaging in a lot of conversations with community members about this. And the more feedback that we get from all the community stakeholders with the different research and the different sides of the conversation is going to help us make the best decision for our schools. And I think that also, you know, when we're talking about the younger elementary school level, we really do have to think not just of cell phones, but of those devices. Like I'm hearing a lot of stories about, you know, I've heard stories about second graders who accidentally, or maybe not accidentally, called their grandparents in a different state from their, their watches in the middle of the day and then, you know, the parent getting called thinking there's an absolute emergency. So it does just seem like a complete unnecessary thing, in my opinion, in elementary school and in research and articles that I've read. And also, I think when you think of the context of the American Pediatric Association and their guidelines of screen time and how detrimental it is to a developing brain and that kid is really in, in younger elementary school grades are supposed to be under two hours of screen time a day. And are we making sure that the screen time that's even appropriate to use in our schools, like a computer going on, IXL, watching something on the app, and is that, is that all aligning to meet the guidelines of the American Pediatric Association?
Thank you, Michaela. Zach?
I would just offer that I appreciate, one, as other folks have mentioned, the amount of community engagement on this topic. And two, something to be mindful of as we're exploring survey data, research, what have you, and creating a broader conversation around our community, because people are going to follow across the spectrum on this topic, is that in the classroom and in our schools, we entrust our educators to be in charge of instruction, academics, culture, and care. And the use of cell phones or smartwatches can introduce an element of communication among students that goes unmonitored by the school. They can't tell what kiddos are talking about and what might be taking place. It's been my experience as both a parent and an educator, is sometimes it can be pretty uncomfortable to see what kind of communications can take place across those devices that students are, sorry, that teachers and educators don't have access to. So I think it's really important that we wrestle with this as a community.
All right. Thank you. Agree and love that we've had some great communication on this from the community as a whole. I think we might be in a good sort of starting place to begin discussions on this. And so to that end, I'm kind of consolidating what some folks have asked for. Some information on overviews of research, a reminder maybe of what the AAP recommendations look like, and then maybe branching out in ways that could include the community, beginning perhaps with some surveys. But also maybe we could discuss asking Duck Rosé to pull together a review committee or task force of some kind composed of community stakeholders, educators, students, family members, et cetera, who could convene and discuss what some of the findings of those surveys and research studies are and maybe build towards bringing some information back to the committee as a whole sometime later this year. Realistically, we're at summer now, so I would imagine those task forces would really not be likely to get started until fall. And then maybe begin some conversations about what might be a good fit for our community based on what sort of feedback we get from all of our community stakeholders. Because there are things that we're not necessarily going to think of, that our educators might think of, or our students might think of, or our family members might think of that could help us to weigh our way towards some kind of policy or overview. Andrew?
I just want to add on to say when we're talking with community members and surveying students and teachers, something I think that we should be emphasizing is phone use inside versus outside the classroom wall still in school. I think that's really, really important to this conversation. So I think there's rules that we could be changing within classroom use in terms of phones, like maybe just getting rid of this rule altogether that teachers would have more control and just say, no phone use in the classroom whatsoever. Think that might be a little bit of a better way to go about this, but maybe still allowing it at lunch or during passing, just because I think, like, I think that just sort of has somebody to, has to do, and I don't want to sound like the teenager who's phone obsessed, but I do think this is the reality of it. It's, phones are almost, I would say, critical when it comes to communication throughout the school day. Like I'm a cross-country captain and I constantly have to text the kids throughout, if it's a rainy day, throughout the school day, say, this is what we're doing at practice because we'll meet in a different spot. Because if it's raining, we'll meet inside in the cafeteria at a different time than we would if it wasn't raining. And I think that stuff that would, if we were to ban phones altogether in school, that would cause a lot of chaos for almost every team, every club out there. And I think it's just a better way to meet in the middle with students and cause less contention if we can sort of survey those differently with like how phones are being used at lunch or in passing versus in the classroom.
No, that's good. And also to think about if a one-size-fits-all approach is right across all grade levels, I would argue, and I think everyone would agree, that there might be very different guidelines and rules for an elementary student versus a high school student. And even within the high school years, that there might need to be different approaches to technology usage with ninth graders compared to 12th graders, et cetera. So beginning those community discussions, I think, would be a good way for us to get a feel for sort of where our guidelines might be best directed and what that could look like. Jamie?
Completely agree. Can I just say one?
Yeah.
I would just expand it more than cell phone. I would just say devices, because I even look at just the devices that everyone is using, both from a budgetary reason and from a, I don't want them in my house anymore reason, and I don't want my kids learning on them reason, is another reason why we should just look at it in totality. Do we need Chromebooks? You know, do we need these things? You know, we're spending a fortune on them and are they giving us the bang for the buck to educate our kids for that next one? Yes, they need to know how to use computers, but they need to bring them home with them all the time. Do they need to be in front? You know, if you just think about it from parenting, policing these things as a parent at home, I feel bad for the teachers to be able to police them in the schools and know what's going on. And I completely agree with you. The high school is very different from the middle school, which is very different from, and it may be different, but just look at all devices, whether, what's appropriate at school and what's not, so.
All right. Other thoughts? Julie?
Nicole, I, I'm just trying to piece together, you know, what you were saying about pulling together a task force on this. Does that mean that we wouldn't, I'm just in terms of like setting expectations and being responsive to parents? Does that mean we wouldn't consider a change of policy for another year or would we consider changing the policy like maybe here?
I think we could, we could say that timing wise, I don't know that we would be in any position to institute any new policy for beginning in September, but I don't think that that has to mean that we would wait all the way until the following September either. I think, I think we could see, see what our initial information turns up, see what kind of recommendations that task force comes back with after sort of aggregating that data and giving us some overview. And then maybe send what that rec, discuss as a committee and then maybe send towards policy sub to then bring back to the committee as a whole and then see where we are at that point. There would also have to be conversations related to if we did decide that we were going to discuss things like yonder pouches, et cetera, what sort of funding that would look like. There are a lot of factors to sort of consider there. So I, I don't think that waiting until September to get started means waiting a whole nother year at all. There's no reason to think that. But I don't know that we're in a position to do anything for this coming school year.
Okay. I, I would just urge us like not to make the perfect the enemy of the good on this one, just in terms of like, you know, solving all of the problems together. It sounds like there's more nuance at certain levels of schools or with, you know, to Jamie's point, like Chromebooks versus phones. So like, if we find pieces that we can implement sooner rather than later, it seems like we should sort of try to find a way to separate those out and just, you know, kind of piece by piece, get some of this into place.
Yeah, that's a good thought. Thank you. Other thoughts? Do we all agree with the idea, did we make a motion on that, on the idea of a task force? Or we just, we would like you to make that happen? Does anybody have any thoughts about that?
You don't need one.
You don't, you don't need one unless, unless you think it would help with the position of the community, the committee, you know, to, to the community if you felt like it was important to say that the committee was explicit in directing the administration to set up a task force or to conduct a survey or...
Kind of like Steve Wolf, but maybe the task force can help create the survey. So that would probably be a good first step. Then I would entertain a motion to direct the superintendent to help establish a task force related to the topic of cellphone usage at schools.
So moved.
There we go.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote.
Can we just say device use at a gym schools and stuff like that?
Absolutely. That's a good point. Thank you, Michaela. As amended then?
As amended.
Yes. All right. Any further discussion? Okay.
Can I clarify a question? The, when we say device uses, are we talking about school issued devices or are we talking about, say?
I would say we begin.
Smartwatches and...
I would say we begin with that. We can, we can broaden out as needed.
Begin with...
Yeah. But I would, I would begin with the cellphone, technology, smartwatches.
Gotcha.
Whatever else people are bringing from home.
Start there and then work your way into...
Yeah, let's see where we go from there.
Yeah, and I, I would actually agree with Julie that there may be some handbook changes that we would want to bring forward short of the completion of the work of a task force. So I mean, you know, for example, not allowing students to wear smartwatches at a certain grade level and below might be something, that's, that's low hanging fruit potentially.
I get it. The only, the only reason why I say, I'm, I have my viewpoint on it, I just don't know the temperature of the entire community.
Yeah, fair.
We've gotten a bunch of emails, but that just might, we might get a bunch of emails on the other side. I don't really know. It's a, it's a weird topic, you know, whether I agree with it or not, you know, there is definitely people on the other side of it, is like, my kid has to have that. And I kind of go, how does your, why's your fourth grader really need that? It doesn't make sense to me, but that they, it's logical to them. There's a lot of them too. So let's, I would say, don't rush.
Yeah, exactly. Hear from folks first, see what, see what kind of thoughts we have and then we can begin to work with our educators and our administration to craft something that makes sense for us.
Okay.
All right. Other thoughts related to the motion to direct the superintendent to establish a task force related to the topic of device usage at school? All right, seeing none, we'll move to a vote. Zach?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
And yes for me as well. All right. So we can plan to maybe see some information go out related to establishing that by late summer, early fall and get started with work there.
I think we can, there might be some existing tried and true validated surveys out there that we can tap into and perhaps that can go out in advance of establishing a task force. We'll do some, we'll do some legwork on it for sure.
Sounds good. All right. So we are moving on. We have an executive session and a recommended motion.
We're gonna...
Are we gonna change that to not reconvene?
We're not going to, and it's with collective bargaining unit A and F as well. Okay.
Collective bargaining units A and F, okay, got it. I move that the school committee meet in executive session pursuant to mass general law, chapter 30A, section 21A, purpose two, conduct a strategy session in preparation with non-union personnel, independent contract administrators, section A and section F. And purpose seven, consideration of release of executive session minutes of previous meetings to not reconvene into open session.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Could we clarify unit?
Unit A and F.
And unit S.
Correct.
Units A and F.
Correct. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a roll call vote. Zach?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
And yes for me as well. This meeting is adjourned and we will see everyone next week. Thank you.